Call to order the meeting of the Verona Common Council on Monday, February 25th, at 7:00 PM. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll.
Alder Person Journey, here. Alder Person Kemp.
Here.
Alder Person Cole.
Here.
Alder Person Posey.
Here.
Alder Person Ricky.
Here.
Alder Person Touche.
Present.
Alder Person Gaskell is in the building and Alder Person Cronin is absent and excused.
Thank you. Next we will move on to item four, which is public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to speak, now would be the time to do so. All right, seeing nobody rushing up to the mic, we'll move on to item five. Approval of the minutes from the February 11th, 2019 Common Council Meeting and the February 18th, 2019 Special Common Council Meeting. Comments, corrections, questions, motions?
Move approval.
Motion by Alder Cole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ricky, I think. Last chance for corrections. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the February 11th Common Council Meeting and the February 18th Special Common Council Meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Minutes are approved. Next up, we'll move on to item six, Mayor's Business. We have just one item for some police officer recognition. Turn it over to Chief Coughlin.
Thanks, Mayor Diaz, for allowing us this opportunity and thanks, Common Council, for giving us a few minutes to recognize some heroic actions by a few of our local public safety officials. I'll read a, I have two commendations, one for Officer Matthew Schultz and one for Officer Philip Salas. I tend just to read one of them, which is, will provide a summary and a backdrop for the incident in question and which they're being commended for. And then I'll introduce Chief Dostalik with Fitrona EMS, who can say a few words about the paramedics, and then Dr. Lohmeyer from UW, who will also provide a few comments and feedback regarding the call. So, this is a commendation presented to Officer Matthew Schultz. On January 21st, Officer Matt Schultz and Officer Philip Salas displayed composure, professionalism, teamwork, and compassion when they helped save the life of an adult male who had unintentionally shot himself in one of his legs with a firearm, causing critical injury and significant bleeding. When the officers arrived at the scene, they found the patient seated in his car and unconscious. Officer Schultz removed the patient from the car while Officer Salas prepared a tourniquet from his patrol vehicle. Officer Schultz applied the tourniquet with Officer Salas administering chest compressions as paramedics were arriving at the scene. As a result, the bleeding stopped and the patient regained consciousness. The quick and decisive actions taken by Officer Schultz and Officer Salas, which undoubtedly saved the life of the patient, are commendable.
So, Officer Schultz, you can come forward and give your word.
Thank you very much for having us here tonight. I just want to say a few words about the staff that we have. So, Chance Gads Marsky and Jeremy Owen and Jordan Larson were the Fitrona staff that was on this call. And I think what's unique about that crew, just the makeup of that crew, is that we have a veteran that's been with Fitrona for 12-plus years, 17-plus years. And then Jeremy's one of our new LTEs, and then Jordan is one of our interns. So, we had a wide range of experience here. And I think what's unique about this call is that 95% of the time, the calls that we go on are rather routine. You know, we do our thing and we go to the hospital, but it's that 5% of the time that things are critical. And this was a case where things were critical, and the decisiveness that all of the responders took that night, that afternoon, saved a life. And the training that we put in, the work that we do together, really made a difference. And I want to thank them for, for being on top of their game and doing the things that we're supposed to do. You know, we trained for, you know, the mundane and the 5% of the critical stuff that happens occasionally, and that was one of these cases here. So, great job by, by all three of them, great job by the officers. The Verona Fire Department was part of this team as well, and I can't thank them enough for, for doing their job 100% plus.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak. My name's Mike Lohmeyer. I'm one of the emergency medicine physicians at the University of Wisconsin. I'm also the medical director for Dane County EMS, and I have been involved with Fitrona EMS, Pittsburgh Fire, and Verona Fire for the last seven years. I also work with Dr. Hsu Jung, who is one of our trauma surgeons, and we have been teaching the Stop the Bleed technique throughout Dane County for the last two years at least. It's basic hemorrhage control through direct pressure, tourniquet use, and wound packing. And the, the thing that is always really inspiring to us and amazing is when the law enforcement officers, who are always the first ones there, actually use some of these techniques. And this case, I think, really not only highlights it, but puts a giant exclamation point at the end of just how important their involvement is. The actions of Officer Salas and Officer Schultz undoubtedly saved this person's life. He made it to the hospital. They were the first link in the chain of survival. And as part of our Stop the Bleed campaign, we wanted to come here and just do a recognition for them. So, we have a letter of thanks that will go with each of them, as well as a copy for their files. And then, for those of you who haven't been initiated before, we have challenge coins that we've made up as part of our Stop the Bleed campaign. So, this is something that started in the US military, has really caught a lot of traction with the paramilitary groups with police, fire, and EMS. These coins are just a tangible reminder that they can keep on their person with them and that they can, they can use as a reminder for all of the, the great work that they did that day. So, I'll be brief, which is not always my specialty. But I just wanted to say thank you to you, and more importantly, I wanted to personally say thank you to the officers.
I just want to, on behalf of myself and the City of Verona and the City Council, I just want to say thank you both to the police officers and to Fitrona EMS for their service and, and for doing an amazing job in a, probably a pretty traumatic situation. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we will move on to item seven, announcements. Anyone from the council have an announcement? Alder Cole.
I'd like to make an announcement that this Sunday, March 3rd, at 1:00 PM, from 1:00 to 3:00 at Kahootz Bar, there is a fundraiser for We Believe in Katie. It's meat raffle, which is, I went to last year and it was really fun. They raised a lot of money for this, which supports the Carbone Cancer Center, including the American Family Children's Hospital and the Make-A-Wish Foundation. And for those that aren't familiar, the raffle consists of various rounds where participants can buy tickets for the opportunity when prime cuts of meat provided by Millers and Sons. And again, it's just really fun and really benefits a good cause.
Thank you. Other announcements from the council? Seeing none, we will move on to the administrative report. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. So, I have a few announcements tonight. The first one is there is an open house for the Verona Road Project on March 21st from 5:00 to 6:30 PM. They do hold quarterly meetings. If anyone is interested in attending those, while it's not in the city, it does impact residents living here. It's also a great Facebook page, if you haven't looked at it. They do a great job in providing updates on that road construction project. Dane County Citizen Villages will have a local roads workshop on March 11th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. They'll focus on road maintenance. There is a planning commission meeting next, next Monday on March 4th. Items on that agenda include festival foods, floodplain ordinance, a review of 507 Brew Street, a development on Valley Road, changes to our mailbox requirements, looking at our Parkland dedication requirements, and then also looking at our zoning code rewrite. There's a neighborhood meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the Chamber. That's for the, the senior housing project located at 841 North Main Street. There's also a CDA meeting this Thursday at 5:00 PM. Will, there'll be a presentation at that meeting from the Sun Prairie Economic Development Director, Neil Schulte. Neil's going to kind of present about what CDAs do in Sun Prairie and how we could be using our CDA a little bit better. Couple of our updates is that we continue to have some staff discussions on the warming center. I know that was discussed at the last council meeting. We hope to move forward here in the near future with some items for the council regarding that. We're also in the process of updating our website. I would characterize this as more of, I guess, kind of getting your house painted. It's like the outside of your house gets painted, but you don't really touch the inside of it. So, what you're going to see with that is new colors, kind of some new themes as well. As part of that, staff is going through the entire website to kind of look at some of our pages. We have some outdated pages that need updating, trying to get those updated. But if the council has any comments on the website update, let myself know or Ms. Clark know. We'd be curious to hear if you have any thoughts on that and just any feedback that you can give us on that. That'd be appreciative. It would be similar to the last time we did this, where once we kind of select a design and kind of a color scheme, we take that back to the council kind of for the initial approval of it, and then finalize that at that time. We continue to transition our assessor, so we are now working with Associated Appraisal. The one thing to be aware of is there has been delay in sending out the personal property taxes. So, we have granted an extension on that until March 31st. So, if there's any questions on that, just let people know. Drive them to the website. We do have an announcement on the, on the main page of the website, just notifying people that an extension has been granted. We also approved downtown plantings and the planter boxes. We have signed a contract to that to kind of spruce up the downtown, have some more color in the spring. So, that's going to be moving forward. March 25th, I know Ellen sent out an email on that date, but if people cannot make that meeting, I guess please let us know. That is the week of spring break for the school district. So, I think we have one person already who can't make it. Mr. Touche, his, his hand up, so that's two. So, if there's anyone else, we have three. So, we'll, Ellen will be sending out an email to kind of follow up if, if we have to have another meeting that month or not, just kind of poll the, the council on that then. So, we'll, we'll plan on moving the meeting on the 25th, either moving it or not having it. Couple more things is, you know, obviously, I'm in the interim role. Just want to let the council know, know staff has been doing a great job assisting me. There's a lot of things going on. We're very fortunate to have a great staff, department heads. They've been very helpful. There's obviously a lot of items going on, but just on behalf of myself, of just all the department heads and, you know, Ms. Clark as well, just they've done a great job of helping you out when there's certain things that I may not know what's going on, but it's been a, it's been a, it's been a smooth process with the department assisting with that. Finally, I guess the question is, the council is, each agenda, we have this announcement period on there. What do you want to hear? I guess, you know, I had a bunch of items tonight. Is that too much, or do you want to hear less? But what do you, what are you looking to hear from me? Because I can tell you a lot or I can tell you nothing. So, any feedback you have is now would be great, or you can just send me an email and say, you know, my, my intent is to kind of hopefully tell you kind of things are going on, trying to follow up on items that may have been discussed here and maybe not finalized to give you an update on where those are at. But if there's anything you want me to, anything else I should be saying, just, just tell me and I'll be doing that.
I want to say something. Thank you for updating the information on the city website, because there's a lot of stuff that's out of date and, and we should have things up to date. Questions or comments from the city council on the administrative report? Alder Journey, and then Alder Gaskell.
So, thank you for that report. It was very informative. And when you're talking about the update on the website, I know the senior, the Friends Board for the Senior Services was working on updating their website. So, I don't know if you're aware of that or not. But anyway, there, I think the link goes from the city into the Friends website.
Alder Gaskell.
I think that was a great update. I'm wondering if we can actually get that included in writing in the packet. Would be really nice as well, if possible.
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
Alder Touche.
Morris Benner.
Other comments or question? Alder Ricky?
Just as far as the website goes, that's great that it is going to be updated, because I agree it needs it. And I'm more interested in, rather than the aesthetics of how it looks and the colors and things like that, I'd be more interested in when I type in a keyword, if it like takes me to all the things that have that keyword, because it just to make it more user-friendly. I don't know if there's a way to do that, but I'm not a website designer. I have no idea.
I will ask the question, because I do not have the answer. We'll look into that.
Other comments or questions? All right, we will move on to the engineers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the two sort of active construction projects we have going on are kind of on hold because of the weather. Well 6 really isn't doing a whole lot until the weather improves and the snow melts and we can actually dig some pipe in the ground. Fireman's Park, they're trying to work on the shelter. As, as it warms up enough, they can do block and masonry. Not doing a lot on the utilities either, just because of the cold temperatures and the risks to the, to the guys on site. So, as far as upcoming projects go, the city awarded the 2019 Asphalt Rehab Project to Raymond P. Cattell and the 2019 Asphalt Chip Seal Project to Farners. That was earlier this month. And the city staff issued a, an RFP for the East Side Interceptor and Relief Force Maine. That is all to service to pump station 17 out on Brew Street. That RFP was out February 1 and is due March 1, back to the city for evaluation. I believe that is to be interviews set for March 13th and an award, I believe, on the 25th. One last piece, the Verona Area High School, just to keep everybody else up in, up to date. City staff and AECOM have been working almost around the clock with JSD on these plans and specifications for the road projects. They submitted preliminary plans and specifications and stormwater work to the city and to AECOM. We have provided comments back to them. And now we are working almost on a weekly or bi-weekly basis with JSD to get the road, road alignment geometrics set for all of the off-site improvements, plus Wildcat Way and Stewart's Woods Road, so that they can get this bid. Their, their plan is by mid to late March, they want to have it on the streets, so they can start construction in May and start working on the access to the high school. That's it for now.
Thank you, guys, for working on that project with the high school. I know it's, it's been tough and complicated, and deadlines aren't necessarily what people want, but I'm just glad it's, it's still progressing. Questions on the engineers' report or comments? All right, thank you. We'll move on to item 10, committee reports. Finance Committee, Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to make a motion regarding the payment of the bills in the amount of $4,399,474.69.
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Posey. Alder Kemp?
Just for the sake of discussion, there's only a couple larger payments. There were a few property tax overpayments that were sent back to residents. Larger payments were an amount of $2,729,3686. That was for the purchase of the Public Works Land. And then also, we had a payment for the County Trunk M Construction, the amount of $1,409,717.70.
Thank you for the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Kemp?
No, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to 10B, Public Safety and Welfare Committee.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution number R-19-012, amending the fee for City of Verona's special event permit.
Motion by Alder Ricky. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole, I think. Alder Ricky?
Thank you. The number of special events being held in Verona is increasing each year, and we expect this trend to continue. Each event requires a great deal of time and effort by Sergeant Christensen, Chief Coughlin, and the City Clerk's Office. This current special event permit fee of $30 does not cover the city's costs for application processing and event coordination. Therefore, a special event permit fee increase to $150.50 for nonprofit organizations is being proposed.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of resolution number R-19-012, amending the fee for the City of, of Verona's special event permit in the amount specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Ricky? Great. We will move on to 11, Old Business. 11A is discussion and possible action regarding the release of the public utility easements within Lot 218 of the Cathedral Point Platte. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. The next three items on the agenda are all related to the city's recent acquisition of the Purple Cow property. All three items, A, B, and C, are the release of easements that are currently on, on the parcel. As part of the transaction with Veridian and the ultimate recording of the second addition to the Cathedral Point Platte, the city needs to release these easements. Legal council has reviewed the release, as long as staff, and we have no concerns with it. And we do recommend that we release all three easements as identified on the agenda.
I'll make those motions.
Can we make it all?
I do want to time, just to be safe.
Okay, one at a time. Alder Touche?
All right, at this time, under item 10, or excuse me, 11A, I'm making a motion to release, for the release of public utility easement within Lot 218 of Cathedral Point Platte.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Anything to add, Alder Touche?
No, I think Mr. Sayer did a perfect job there.
Great. Questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of releasing the public utility easements within Lot 218 of the Cathedral Point Platte, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Alder Touche?
Next up, 11B. I make an emotion to release, for the release of stormwater easement within Lot 218 of Cathedral Platte.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ricky. Anything to add, Alder Touche?
None.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of releasing the storm sewer easement within Lot 218 of the Cathedral Point Platte, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion passes. Alder Touche?
Next, 11C. I make an emotion to, for the release of utility easement under document number 4297834.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Gaskell. Any further comments or discussion on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor of releasing utility easement under document number 4297834, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion passes. Next, we'll move on to 11D, which is discussion and possible action regarding the notice of claim from Progressive Insurance, October 11th, 2018 vehicle accident. Mr. Sayer, or who's covering that?
I'd probably do it.
Alder Kemp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion recommending to the council to accept the notice of claim from Progressive Insurance for the auto accident on October 11th, 2018.
And that was a motion to accept the claim, not to recommend?
Correct.
Okay. Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Posey. Alder Kemp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe we, at least at the committee level, have dealt with this before. This was a second claim. I think now the amount is, in the amount of $4,147, isn't that correct?
Yes.
$4,147. At this point, we are recommending to the council to, sorry, $4,144.97. We paid $3,950.63, which is a difference of $194.34. At this point, we're recommending that we move forward. I know Brian, Brian was, may have had something to say about it, but at this point, we should just move forward.
Okay. Questions, comments on the motion?
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alder Posey?
We did clarify that this should be the final bill that we get in this matter.
Correct.
That, that everything has been corrected and evaluated at this point.
Sounds good. Further comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of accepting the claim from Progressive Insurance for the October 11th, 2018 vehicle accident, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Next up, we'll move on to 11E, which is discussion and possible action regarding the recruitment of the city administrator. Mitch, do you want to start us off?
So, I, we, we sent out an updated position description. So, first of all, that would have went out on Friday afternoon. So, last week, what we had discussed was getting input from the different council members and then also the department heads and incorporating that input into our overall process. So, one of the things we did is, with that input, looked at ways we could incorporate it into the actual job description. So, the, the position description was sent out to the group. Sarah, were we going to talk about possibly just approving that tonight?
I think we can, if everyone's had a chance to look at it.
And there was two quick updates. I think they're kind of typos that we had found. One this morning was, I think it was just the last, or I think it was the fifth to last bullet in the Knowledge Skills and Abilities section. It should read... Oh, it should read, "Ability: Apply strong problem-solving skills by anticipating community needs and concerns related to the city." I think it had, there was like a typo. It was "community" it had said. So, that was, I think, the main update. And then there was a "or" update in the Education and Experience section under the Master's Degree in Business and Public Administration. It should say, "A Master's Degree in Business or Public Administration are Related." So, those were just the two small things. But other than that, this incorporates a lot of the, the input that we had. There's still kind of, I guess, other things that I collected, other input, that will be used throughout the screening process. I got a lot of really good stuff that's going to be really helpful, a lot of very good job-related competencies that we can be using throughout our screening process.
Questions, comments for the city HR person? Potential motions on the accepting the job description?
Do you think we can make a motion on the agenda?
Not on the agenda, okay. Consensus, okay. Alder Touche?
Yeah, I'm just, I remember reading through this and I didn't, I didn't bring my notes here with me tonight, unfortunately, but the ability to interpret and apply laws and regulations, do we want to focus that more on our city and state, less so the generic terms? I mean, I-
Sure, just more, just different-
I feel like that's an important aspect.
Statutes, things like that.
Right, because, I mean, our previous administrator came from out of state-
Sure.
-was getting himself ramped up, but that was also made it difficult for him to fully understand our culture and how things work here in Wisconsin.
That's a good point, yeah. I can, I can certainly get some language in it that's more specific to, to here, to Wisconsin. That's okay.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Other questions or comments? Are people in, in general, I guess, do we have consensus on the job description other than the correction Alder Touche made?
Yeah.
So, what's our timeline look like?
Sure. So, that's, I also sent out kind of the tentative timeline to the group. So, we could get this posted as soon as this week. So, that's kind of my goal, is getting something posted out for an open recruitment towards the end of the week, hopefully by Thursday. So, then we had talked about that general timeframe for leaving it posted last week. So, I believe the, when I calculated it, I had it at like a 38-day posting. So, kind of right between that 30-to-45-day window we had discussed. See here. So, I had a published date of February 28th and then a deadline date of April 7th.
Alder Touche? Alder Touche?
As someone who's, I'm hiring at my work right now and I've had one position open for 75 days. For me, it's about the right candidate. And I'm a little nervous about limit, having such a narrow timeframe. I almost, I don't see the harm, I mean, feel free to educate me. What's the harm in keeping it out even longer? Just to, you know, hopefully catch the right candidate.
Sure, so, last week, we talked just a little bit about our, kind of our recruitment strategy as well and some of the places we'll be advertising and how we're going to kind of have that organized and, and really be strategic kind of right off the bat with the job posting. The, the concern, I think I brought up just last week, was sometimes our, I guess, active qualified job seekers are the ones that sometimes, when you extend these processes pretty longer, are the ones who get picked up elsewhere, if that makes sense. So, that was kind of one consideration we had, we had talked about. So, just one, making, you know, targeting the right group right from the start. And then also, hopefully having a process that moves along quickly enough where, you know, if there are qualified candidates out there, we're not losing them along the way in our process if it gets extended too long. And the posting, the posting portion of the, the overall process is something that, you know, takes quite a bit of time, obviously. But, you know, I can see it both ways, so.
I, I would say if the committee's comfortable with that compressed timeframe, that's fine. I'm, I just, you know, you, you bring in a group of candidates, you interview them. If you aren't happy, as more applicants come in, it becomes a new group. I'm, I'm not speaking for the city process. I just know my own professionally. And it tends to be, you, you do first interviews while you're doing second and third interviews with other candidates. And you just keep them churning through the pipeline until you find that person you're looking for. So, you know, if, if, I just don't want us to be left with a pool and we don't like anybody in that pool. And then we have to make concessions with whatever that individual is. I mean, I think, you know, it's been tough for us as a city. And, you know, I think we would do ourselves a disservice if we end up with a mis-hire.
Alder Gaskell?
So, is it possible to leave that as an, the job posting deadline, to leave that as an ongoing thing? Because in the meantime, we would be getting applications, I would think. But then if, if we're not too happy with what we're seeing, that the posting would continue?
Sure, so, so possibly doing something like a first review date, for example. So, if we, maybe we use that first 38 days and then on the job announcement, say, we'll begin the review, the first review date, that 38 days, but we'll still continue accepting applications. I think that's something we could do.
I guess I would just, as long as it's clear to applicants, because sometimes people wait till the deadline.
Correct.
I wouldn't want someone to wait-
Yeah.
And then they miss their chance, you know, if they would have found an applicant.
Right, so establishing that first review date will be important. So, that's something I can look into and I, I think that's a great idea and could, you know, help us.
I, I can say from a business perspective, we're looking for go-getters. And the ones that wait for the last minute to apply usually aren't the go-getters. So, yeah, I just think, you know, out here.
Alder Gaskell?
So, one of the things to counteract this, though, is that Mitch has got a really good strategy for getting the word out. So, I feel like if we have a good blanket strategy for getting the word out, how long it's open is not so much of an issue. Because we've, we've got it out through a lot of avenues. 38 days maybe sounds odd, maybe 45 days sounds a little better. I don't know if it's a better number, but I think by showing we have a deadline, we show we're serious too and that we expect that we're going to get a decent candidate or two out of it as well.
I just wanted to share my, my personal experience. It's truly, I'll go with whatever the council wants.
Thoughts from other, other Alders? Alder Posey?
So, would there be a drawback from doing the ongoing at once we have our kind of initial applicants get priority? And then what would be the drawbacks from doing the ongoing after that?
I, I really don't know if there would be that many, to be honest with you, yeah. Yep. I mean, I think that's a, a good option.
Alder Cole?
So, what would happen then, say we have this as like, you know, the first review date?
Right.
And then we do find somebody within that group that we like, but we've gotten more applications past the first review date that we didn't just not review any of those applications that came in after the first review date? Is that how it works?
Correct. It would, yeah, I think it would work something similar to that, right? Yep. So, it's kind of, we can put that on the posting, you know. This will be out there until we find a candidate or somewhere, something along that, some similar language. But yeah, so, so we, what I'd like to probably, what I think would make a lot of sense is if we did kind of a first review date and then even a second review date so people knew and just kind of laid that out there.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Other comments? Are people in general comfortable with the first review date?
And I'll just add, the reason it's at 38 is because usually if you close it on a Sunday night, that's kind of the, the strategy behind that. It wasn't, it's just, leave it open for an extra weekend if you can because nobody's going to be here really doing anything with it, if that makes sense, so that we can get it reviewed beginning the next Monday. So, that's where the 38 came from, so.
That makes a lot of sense. All right, well, I think, I think you have consensus on that to move forward.
Okay.
Anything else?
Then the last, the last thing I just wanted to clarify was those initial resume cover letter reviewers. So, right now, I believe I had Sarah and then Heather and then Charlotte. Or is that kind of the plan for now, or should we, does anybody else want to participate in that?
Alder Cole?
I'd be interested in participating in that.
I think, I think at the very least, the Personnel Committee has to.
Okay. And, and then what I can do too is just with this group is kind, is start to send out, I can send out a poll just about schedules and things like that. So, we can meet and kind of get things going right away that first week once we, we have those applications, so we can keep things moving. And then for the interview panels, I'll just send a note, notices out to the entire group and then also the department heads to see who's interested and gather information on schedule and timeline so we can get that on calendar. So, I'll probably do the, the interview, the interview poll within the next couple of weeks. But the first one will be with the, the resume screener. So, just from a logistical standpoint, those are just kind of important things to make sure we're keeping things moving, so.
Alder Gaskell?
Just like to add that if you are at all interested, now is your chance so that we don't get, you know, into the process and then someone decides they want to review stuff. So, now, and so maybe we should also check in with Kate to see if she has an interest. Maybe email her directly since she's not here tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I would express an interest as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a, definitely have an interest, but I'm looking at these dates and I have some work travel coming up. And I would, I would feel like I'd do a disservice by not being able to give this 100% of my time right now, so.
Alder Gaskell?
So, one thing that isn't clear to me on the timeline is, so the Personnel Committee would review the interview or the applications? Is that what the thought is?
Correct, correct.
So, maybe that needs to be inserted into the timeline?
Oh, yes, into the document there, yep. So, I was, I'll update the exact members onto that, that chart.
And then I don't know if there's a timeline in there or not.
Yeah, so I, I think we, I had to put on the email just that one week would be. So, we'd probably hopefully meet that Monday night and then kind of go over just the procedure and then try to get, get it wrapped up in a week so we can start moving on to interviews.
People generally comfortable with the timeline?
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Last chance for comments from the council on the City Admin Process? Alder Posey?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I think it would be great for us to get updates on kind of how the pool is looking since we've been having this discussion as that review process, bringing that into here so that we can hear. We don't need specifics because I know that we probably don't want to necessarily get into the nay-gritty at that point. But just getting an idea if we are going to need that extended time or if we're feeling comfortable about our pool would be good.
Alder Touche?
I just want, and if I remember right, during our last time we did this, a lot of the candidates wanted their names to not be public because they didn't really want to advertise that they were looking. So, I mean, you know, just let's continue to keep that in mind, especially as, as we go through this process, so.
Other questions or comments? All right.
And thanks for all the feedback. It was, it was good. It was helpful, so I appreciate it.
Excellent. And with that, we will move on to Item 12, New Business. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Approval of Operator Licenses. Ms. Clark?
I need a motion, please, to approve the operator licenses as presented by the City Clerk.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second? Second by Alder Kemp, I think. All those in favor of approving the operator licenses, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. We are on adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Motion by Alder Touche?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole. All those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we are adjourned. Thank you.